So. On the gas utility expenditures. That is a. So, we're showing an expenditure there of two fifteen. That doesn't cover any other expense. That doesn't cover, because really and truthfully, you've got, you've got a utility director, you've got a department downstairs that's doing the billing, collecting the payments, the whole nine yards. In my opinion, you'd be looking at, say, a third, a third, and a third. A third of the expense for those departments should go underwater, a third of it should go under sewer, and a third of it under gas. But if you take a look at this, our gas revenue is at two sixty-eight and our expense is at two fifteen, and that doesn't cover anything. All that's covering is the, uh, some, some repair and maintenance, the gas purchase. I don't even think that has any personnel in it to help pay for the portion of the meter reader that's reading the meters. So with that being said, that's a, you know, I think that whenever we do look at this, at this department, we need to look at equaling that out to where the gas users are paying for the gas that they're, that they're using. Because right now, like I said, if you break it down a third, a third, and a third, it's a, your revenue is a lot less than, than what your expenditures are gonna be. Which has always been the hard problem with auditing that department because you have so many other expenses that co-mingle with water and sewer.
Julie, how many gas customers do we have now?
How many?
Four sixty-five.
And how many water customers? How many of those are businesses though? Because most time that's where your gas is coming in.
How many gas customers before Katrina? Any other questions, comments on gas? Alright. Waste of water?
Uh, fifty-five thousand left here is in maintenance. We've got something scheduled for that.
Which one are you on, Mister Robert?
That's, uh, four hundred seven twenty-six.
Six thirty-seven.
Six thirty-seven.
On the repairs and maintenance grinder pumps. You know, we talked about it at the meeting, but, uh, we have nothing going into that.
You have thirty, thirty-two or thirty-three coming off grinders this year. So, you leave you with, uh, twenty-five, thirty?
Twenty, I think we have forty-eight total, uh, but, uh, but there is some people that still gonna have this issue. Matter of fact, there's one that, that just called me the other day and had the issue and said that, uh, we no longer, uh, sign an affidavit to, to go on their property and repair this, so I was just wondering why we took that out.
Somebody told you that?
Yeah.
So thirty-three are coming off. How many are we gonna have after that?
Less than twenty, huh?
Twenty-five to thirty.
Less than twenty. Then you look at the second phase of offer, you probably need ten more off.
Twenty to thirty, okay.
Let me ask you this. Whenever we do these projects and we remove these grinders.
We keep them.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Yep, just maintain something happening, just take them over to, um, yeah.
But we haven't got the call grinding along.
Uh, actually I had one last week.
Just last week, yeah.
He wasn't concerned with it, really, just wanted to write it in, wanted to turn their grind over to us. But, that's it. None of that really come off.
But I'd like to see some money go back into that because we're still gonna have fifteen, sixteen, maybe twenty still out there.
Yeah, but Bobby, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have thirty new motors. And if most of everything was, is reused, as long as I don't have to replace the tank, I'm good. Then, uh, now I have a guy that can take care of that instead of having to call a new motor one.
When you say new motors, wouldn't that be used motors?
Yes.
So, that can go out at any time. We'd still be in the same situation.
Whenever we get those, we're gonna put those on inventory so that-
So you go through thirty-three, oop, one of them we're-
The motors coming out on that project, that'll be put into inventory?
Yes.
Need to check that number, Robert, six thirty-eight. Repairs and maintenance grinder, three hundred and forty dollars, uh, something.
Yeah, I have a, I have the-
Yeah, something's not right there. Alright, anything else?
The only thing I have is, you know, I know, I know these bonds and stuff. How come that's not shown in debt service?
Because this is utilities. Utilities is separate enterprise.
It's a separate debt service fund?
No, there, there isn't a debt service fund.
For utilities?
Utilities does not have a debt service fund, but they are, is paid-
But we do debt service to, to pay for these bonds, though.
The two-hundred fund? No, sir. All, all utility debt is paid by utility fund.
I do have one question that I wanna go back to, and that's the utility water distribution. What's the repair and maintenance EQ for forty-five thousand?
You said it was seven twenty-two?
Yes. Six thirty-eight.
Equipment.
Seven twenty-two, six thirty-eight.
R and M equipment, right?
Yeah, yep.
R and M equipment.
It's one you just mentioned to me.
Four hundred and seven twenty-two, six thirty-eight.
It's increasing by forty-three thousand.
Alright, Jay, we'll have to look that up. I don't, I don't feel off the top of my head.
Okay.
Alright, any other questions?
Professional services under, um, s- uh, four hundred seven twenty-four six oh one is going up thirty-six five. Missed nine thousand in expenses year-to-date.
Which one again? Seven thirty-one?
Yeah. Modern purification expense.
Give me that number again.
Uh, four hundred seven twenty-four six oh one. Professional services, other.
Oh, that's, uh, 'cause I'll, I mean, uh-
That's coast foreign areas.
Oh, okay.
Mister Robert, can you give me that ex- explanation that you had given at the beginning of the meeting for the, uh, the difference in the twenty-twenty-six revenue and expenditures versus, uh, the twenty-seven versus twenty-five million?
I'm sorry, I-
The, Bobby had brought it up prior to the start of the meeting or right at the start of the meeting. The difference on the last page, which is the twenty-seven total revenues, twenty-seven million, some change. Total expenditures, twenty-five and some change.
So, since I've been here and everything I have seen in the past, the only funds that we have revenues and match expenditures are the general fund, library fund, and utilities. And, and one of the reasons for that, if you think about, uh, titans, for example. We'll, we'll have expenditures throughout a year and then we'll do a reimbursement, and we may not get reimbursed for those until next year. Because they're between two different fiscal years, you got the revenues in one year and the, uh, expenditures in the prior year, and vice versa. ARPA is an example. ARPA paid us the one point five million at the beginning, but we held those funds for a, probably close to a year before we started spending them. Now, we're gonna spend, um, three point five million and we'll finally get the second one point five million-ish.
Which is basically your capital projects, is-
Yes. Through restricted accounts, uh, for the, for the most part, they've been, uh, there's a lot more revenues than their expenditures and if we're not gonna buy, if we're not gonna spend it, there's no reason to budget.
The two-hundred fund debt service. That one should match though, right?
Uh, no, sir. Well, in a perfect world it would. But what we collect in ad verum is gonna change. In fact, uh, ad verum is really a tough one because we have to budget for what we are going to eventually get in ad verum taxes. It may take us ten years to get it, but we have to budget it all in the first year.
Which is set by your mill value.
Yes.
So, we're looking at here, the difference in debt service is right at a hundred thousand. Right close to it. So, I mean, straight off the top, we're already a hundred thousand down, and that's not even depending on what we collect or not.
And that's been the case for the last several years.
Right, but what I'm saying though is, we need to at least figure mill value to match what the expenditure is, not what the, I mean, because we're already down, we already know the expenditure's on, debt service is five ninety-nine. But we're budgeting five oh four in debt service, so we need to adjust the millage to match the five ninety-nine.
If you say so, yes.
I mean, you, you would have to, if not, it's not budgeting. You're not collecting enough millage to pay the debt service. Right?
Well, we have, uh, seeing how the fund is, uh, got about three million dollars in it, um, it's pretty significant.
Okay, then we need to look at some of these other ones then. Mayor, you had mentioned something earlier about, um, did somebody mention something earlier about executive session for something? Or no?
Oh, that was the incubator.
Oh, okay.
Not tonight.
Alright, anything else?
Anybody?
Nope.
Roberta?
Yeah, I'm good.
Jane?
I'm good.
Jeremy?
Good.
Okay. Alright. The only thing we didn't talk about was salaries. Y'all had a sheet emailed to you, wait, today? Earlier? Any questions on salaries?
Yeah, I've got, well, not necessarily on salaries, but on this police and fire longevity pay. You know, this has been brought up in the past. And the, uh, as I recall, we did adjustments to raise up the people that were existing because at that time, you know, the, the issue was you had a patrolman or firefighter who had been with us for five years. And whenever you hired a new one, we always hired them in at the same pay. So we set a base pay that we would start them all at, and then everybody else would continue to move up to three percent increases. That way you wasn't starting somebody who just walked in the door with the same amount of pay as somebody that had been here for five years. So, so we should have base pays set for police, uh, patrolmen, and for firemen, is what we had set. How many years ago was it? Three years? About three, two years ago? So we set base pays. Because whenever we had looked at this, you know, this longevity pay, we couldn't, we couldn't match what other municipalities was doing. So we said, okay, well, you know, we agreed that you shouldn't bring somebody in off the street making, I don't know, we'll just throw a number out there, you know, a dollar amount, you know, twenty dollars, uh, you know, whatever it may be. So you're taking somebody that's been with us for twenty years, and what was happening was every year that three percent, there was increase in their base pay by three percent. So then when you hired on somebody, you automatically brought them in with a firefighter, you know, without any, uh, uh, you know, like a sergeant or, you know, whatever it may be in the police department, without any status like that, they was coming in and making the same as a patrolman or same as a fireman. So we said, let's set a base pay and keep that base pay like that, and then move the other employees three percent, three percent, three percent. So, is that how we've been doing it? Or have we been bringing them in at the same pay? We've been bringing them in at the same pay as with our patrolmen, so if we take a patrolman or firefighter that's been with us for five years, the new hires that we've been bringing in, are we bringing them in at the same pay?
We, we kinda got away from that when all these other agencies were going so high. And we were trying to keep employees, you know, we're, I'm down five now. And so when someone would come to us, we was like, look, we can offer you this. And they would basically jump on it because they're like, I can go to the bay and make this or the county and make this.
But that was compared to our base pay, or was that compared to what one of our patrolmen that's been with us for three years or five years or anything like that was making?
It was what our patrolman was making at the time, three years or five years.
And then same in the fire department? Have y'all been bringing them in at the base set pay that we had set a few years ago? So you're, you actually have firemen right now that are technically receiving the longevity because they've been here for three, four years or whatever because they, they perceived their three percent increase each one of those years. So now if you hire a new fireman, he's not coming in with this one, he's coming at the base starting pay that we looked at, we set. So really what we need to do is, we need to reevaluate the base starting pay, not necessarily-
Even the base pay has got the bridge of the base.
So the base pay's moved up with the people?
The base pay has moved up. Like there, we have different levels. We have five, one, two, three, and the group status. All those, they've, they've all moved up together. Which is, we've always got, you know, three, four different levels, but they've all moved up at the same time. So nobody has technically gotten on debt, which is everybody gives three percent, but they, the new ones start with the base pay.
So you have a longevity plan in place. How long do they move from status one to status two?
Uh, it's about, it's about two years.
Do we have a policy in place that says that two years you move from status one to status two, or, or is it just moved off of skills or-
We, we have one put in, put in place, but it hasn't been proved yet through board.
Have we been moving them up through those steps though?
No one has technically moved yet. The ones we had that were ready, we lost, so.
So I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, we, we looked at all the longevity pay and all that stuff two, three years ago, whatever, I think it was three years ago, Mayor. And I thought we had worked out a plan to where, you know, we couldn't do longevity, but we set a base pay that was pretty close to competitive, you know. Needless to say, we can't compete with somebody that's got, you know, twenty million dollar general fund. But we tried to get it as close as we possibly could with a base pay, and then everybody else would just keep moving up and you'd hire the new ones at this. But the base pay now, what I'm hearing is that the base pay isn't competitive with what the other departments are bringing in?
Correct.
We, not only police, I, we're, we're probably a dollar off. Actually, when I started, when I did my budget this year and reaching out to the other two agencies, they actually, when they do their budgets, supposedly they're gonna be like going up six percent more than us. Two dollars an hour. So they're gonna be at twenty-four something, and my guys will be at twenty, they're not, the three percent, I think they're getting like sixty cent, sixty-two cents an hour.
Twenty-one, twenty.
Twenty-one, twenty.
Yeah, I, I don't know anything about that base pay that, that was prior to us coming in.
Let me ask you this. This current budget that we're looking at right now, does it have these numbers built into it?
It does.
It does. But, you know, like, like Mike just said, just today we found out that the county's now gonna start people at twenty-four dollars an hour. And I know we can't keep up, you know, we're the smallest-
We say it every year, it's sad, I mean, it's-
Entity, yeah.
I mean, it is, I mean, it, you can't keep up, I mean, we got one of the smaller operating budgets out of anybody and we get, no, we can't.
We brought in certified police officers last year at twenty dollars and fifty-eight cents. Bay St. Louis is starting at twenty-two fifty, the county's starting at twenty-two now to go to twenty-four. Bay St. Louis is probably gonna go up. So, the longevity pay was just a, something that we tried to figure out that could help hold on to some of the seasoned people.
But what's the base pay go to? What's the base starting pay go to? Is it exactly what it is today? Three percent increase. Alright.
Ours isn't changing without the three percent. Well, whatever he's, whatever he's going back to that.
We assume saying the longevity pay is gonna keep the people that have been here for, uh, this one's four years, this one's three years. So, so the longevity pay is gonna keep the people that have been here for four years in fire, three years in PD, but what you gonna do about the starting pay if we already five people down in PD and, uh, and our starting pay's only increasing three cents and everybody else is, you, you, I guess you see what I'm saying? I mean, it's not really helping us with bringing in any new hires. If our starting pay is still at the, you know, three percent's not gonna help us be competitive with anybody else. Only thing three percen, the only thing the longevity pay is gonna do is keep the people that's been here for four years and longer, which is a good thing. I mean, we wanna keep our people, but.
When y'all set the base pay X number of years ago, do you remember, y'all remember what it was, huh?
I forgot what it was, but order for us to recruit people then, we, we had to change, we couldn't stick to that, we had to change it because no one, you know, the kind of workforce, because of the pay. You know, when people leave, and, uh, I think the most experienced guy I have right now, my guy, on the road is five years. And the rest of three or four months. It's like, you know, you have a training facility, you know, I'm willing to take them on, send them to the academy and stuff, and then they turn right back around on you.
Leave for that dollar an hour, two dollars an hour, fifty cents an hour, I mean, I, I know it's, it's been an issue for, forever.
If we change the base pay, it's just gonna, we're gonna have to bump some of these other people too that have been around here for a while. Because then you're back to where you started before. You got, you got an officer coming in and, and somebody's been here for five years making the same amount of money.
Right, but at that time, it was done that way because if they were, let's just say we started a police officer and a fireman at twenty dollars and we set that as a base pay, and I don't remember what the number was off the top of my head. That pay stayed that way. If, uh, and, and that was gonna be a set number. So as these other people moved up, it was three percent, then it compounded with another three percent, then compounded with another three percent. And so those people were moving up in hourly rates, and then when you hired somebody, three years later, they were still at this. The problem is that the twenty dollars, whatever that number may be, hasn't kept up with, with the surrounding municipalities, counties, whatever, have paid.
No.
It was a good plan. It was, it was a, basically a longevity plan that you didn't hire somebody- It was, it was a, basically a longevity plan that you didn't hire somebody in.
Well, Casey, what you were saying is that base pay was going up three percent every year too, right?
So, what we did is that not necessarily the base pay.
Okay.
The base pay, which was what our long-term, mostly eight to ten-year-plus employees were making. We couldn't have anyone come in at that rate. So, we lowered, we lowered our pay for our brand-new people. But every step, every time we got a raise, a colder, everything went up at the same time.
I just don't remember setting it up as, I remember that being a, something that was proposed. I just don't remember it being set up as in fireman one, fireman two, fireman three. I don't remember that. I remember us setting it up as a base starting pay and then the hourly, you know, from there up. I don't remember being set up as different tiers.
That was the only way for me to do it, to go back. You know, other guys wouldn't go up.
But what I'm talking about is how we approved it. I don't remember us approving it in tiers, fireman one, two, three and four, or one, two, three.
I think, yeah, I'd say you presented that a few years back, one, two and three, on the tiers.
Yeah, that's.
But that's whenever all this, that's whenever all this had come up with the longevity pay.
Right, with the longevity pay.
And I don't think that we could do that at that time, I think that we just set it as, this'll be the starting. And then I think what we did was, we did do an increase for everybody else, that's when we did a, an hourly rate increase on PD and fire. But the starting pay was here. So, that's how we kinda jumped out ahead of the, the longevity side of it. We took what y'all was presenting and said, well, let's just take that and add that to the hourly rate. So, that's what we did, I thought. I don't ever remember us doing tier.
Similar to that, yeah, it was similar to what you're saying.
But I, and we could probably go back and find it in the, in the zooms or whatever, but I don't, and we may not, but see, that's, that's been a few years ago. So, let me ask you this, with the longevity pay that's, that we're looking at here, what are we talking about for PD and fire to be able to be competitive and find new hires? Cause if you're down five, how many are you down?
We just hired six.
Oh, Lord.
And our department's not even certified yet.
You got a full house then.
We just, we're just.
Yeah.
See, everybody wants to be a firefighter, nobody wants to be a cop. The applications that we've been getting are bottom tier. So, I mean.
I get it, I mean, it's, we could talk for days.
Is that because of what we're paying or that's just, you think that would change if it was more money?
It's possible, or possible, it's more possible.
Right.
It's shorthand. Uh, make more money always helps, but.
I think every city around's.
This nation one.
You just get all the inexperienced applying here, right?
Yeah.
People just trying to get into it, basically.
How many patrolmen do we have right now? I could count them. Eight certified?
I've got a patrolman paid full-time.
Count, counting sergeants.
Yeah, I'm forty. A lot for good things lots. Three, more timers.
How many hours a year does your, uh, does your guys work? I know it's a, it's, it's an odd number.
Twenty-one eighty-four.
It's not two thousand eighty, it's, it's different because of the way that your shifts run. Eighty-four every.
Eighty-four every. Twenty-one eighty-four a year.
Twenty-one eighty-four.
Twenty-one eighty-four a year.
Where, oh, I don't know.
It's, what, where's the?
Oh, there it is, yeah. Any of that overtime or is that just?
That's straight, that's straight.
All straight?
Straight and actually, the PD guys, they gotta work eighty-six hours before overtime and kicks in, so two hours.
Is your fire department base pay competitive with the other cities?
It's close, base pay one.
Yeah, I don't lose in the other cities because, because of pay.
It's multiple, the pay is one.
How many, uh, so, I guess my question is on zero, zero, one, two hundred, two, two forty, police department salaries and wages not exempt. Uh, police department, second line down.
Mm-hmm.
Two hundred, four twenty.
Mm-hmm.
How many sergeants or how many, anything other than patrol do we have in that, is there a number that we have on that? So, if you took, if you took, uh, I guess what I'm getting at is the one nineteen, the one point one nine, how much of that is patrol?
I'd have to, I'd have to look at the, uh, regional schedule. I'm, uh, I'm ready, I'm in.
Is that, is that everybody except for chief and assistant chiefs?
That includes, um, litter, dog catcher, bailiff for court, secretary. All of those in that too.
How many people totals in that? Just curious.
I don't know, I don't know, but I just, I'm gonna need Daniel.
Well, excluding you and assistant chief.
So, it won't be a lot of number or will we actually add one hang?
Be a lot, be allotted number. Cause that's what we need to go by, cause I mean, you always have to budget for just in case you get lucky and find all of them other positions to fill, you know? People to fill them positions, should I say? Twenty? I come up with twenty with the, with the eight open.
And that, that's a, that's including animal control or combat.
Yeah.
The court bailiff ballroom.
Yes.
Yeah.
I come up with twenty-six without counting the overtime.
The schedule here, this has the, uh, longevity built into this one?
Yes.
Those. And I'll say this, Mayor, I'm, I mean, I'm not opposed to longevity, I'm just trying to figure out how that's gonna help us with our base pay to bring people to fill the empty six positions. I mean, you know, that, that's, that's the bad part. I mean, you wanna reward the people that do stay with us.
Yeah.
But then you also gotta find, you also gotta find, how do you fill them other positions whenever it's a, it's a thing that every single city's facing right now? I don't know that even if you increase the pay by, you know, just throw some crazy, even if you say you increased it five dollars an hour, would you still fill those positions? I mean, because you've got other cities, Gulfport, Biloxi.
They're all down.
You know, all these other places that are paying a whole lot more than that and they're short handed.
Right.
So, I don't know what you would do to fill them, even if, even if you increase the base pay. You know, so longevity may help to keep the ones that's there. I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud, y'all, I mean, anybody got any ideas, I mean?
We just found out about the county and the city of, uh, Bay St. Louis going up about thirty minutes before this meeting.
Yeah.
So.
Which we know what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
We see it every time, just about after, right after every budget with the jumping ship. And I know it affects the PD more so than it does the fire, you know, for some reason, you know? But we're halfway competitive on the fire side, huh?
I think it was about a dollar off.
That's competitive.
That's base, that's not their one.
When you're almost three dollars less than.
Yeah.
But that, that's just the base, that's what I'll do, next one, yeah. So, they can, they're gonna another dollar, maybe two dollars.
Let's put you above some of the other places with the longevity.
He's saying they have it.
They have it, that's a dollar, maybe two dollars.
Oh, they have it.
But we, we, we put that in this year.
No, I'm just saying that's worth the comparison.
Yeah.
Base pays are a buck dollar off, then we get the next dollar, maybe two dollars.
I don't know, I guess we could sit here and beat our heads against the wall all night and try to figure out how we're gonna fill positions, but I don't know that even increasing base pay is gonna, to do it, I don't know.
All right. Any other questions on salaries?
We're gonna have another budget meeting?
Yes.
Next Tuesday.
We're gonna have it right before our regular meeting? Next Tuesday? We'll start, start at six o'clock?
And we're gonna have a budget meeting before our regular meeting?
Unless you wanna do the budget meeting at five thirty. I advertised six o'clock, but all we have to do is post it in three locations that it's been changed.
Which meeting is that?
It's our regular board meeting.
No, which budget meeting is that? That's not the meeting before the adopted meeting, that, is that the public viewing meeting?
No, it's not the pub.
No, 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 the pub.
That's just for us.
Yes, it's just a workshop.
Just for us, yeah.
I mean, if we're gonna do it before our meeting, that only gives us thirty minutes to discuss budget.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we can start it.
I'd do it on a different night. I mean.
I would too.
Okay, what night would you like to do it?
I mean, we've been here. I mean, the only reason I'm saying that is cause, you know, just like with the, I had no idea that we was doing any of that, any of this with the payroll stuff. I didn't get this to nine fifty-five this morning on the, on all the payroll stuff. So, I had no idea that we was even looking at longevity or anything like that. And I know that, I know we've, uh, I know we've looked at it in the past.
Right.
And even the updated budget, I don't think we got that until.
Do you all wanna do it, um, the Wednesday, ne- the day after the meeting or the, or the Thursday?
Our meeting's Tuesday the fifth, we could do it the sixth or the seventh.
Is there any way we could do it on Monday? I don't know if it's like.
I, I couldn't make, I couldn't make it Monday, I could do Wednesday though.
I can do Monday.
I'm, I'm good every day that week, to be honest with you, except for the Tuesday night when we already have our meeting.
Bobby work Wednesday, Thursday?
Yeah.
What about the thirteenth? The following week? Any, any day, really?
No, our public hearing's the twentieth, so. We have to give time.
How far in advance do we have to advertise it?
Uh, I mean, we could call a workshop within two hours if it's, if it's, you know.
I mean, prior, prior to the, um, the public hearing on it?
Oh, at least a week.
And that has to be done how far prior in advance of the adopted budget? Isn't that like two weeks prior to that?
You have the public hearing and then you've gotta go to September? It's a week. You've got the public hearing, when is it? The twentieth?
When's the public hearing?
You've got it set for the twentieth, do you know what time?
Yeah, right. Six o'clock.
Six.
But, um, you've got, I have a week. And then we adopt on the second.
So, you'd have to have this meeting prior to the thirteenth to give you a week before the public hearing of the twentieth?
Yes.
Thirteenth fine with me.
No, I gotta have it before then.
I'd do it before then.
Eleventh, twelfth, either one of those, good.
I could do the eleventh, do the twelfth.
Yeah, I'm good with the eleventh and twelfth.
I'm good with either one of those also.
Okay, wanna do eleventh?
Do you have the eleventh or the?
I do, I'll have to cancel it.
Everybody can make the eleventh?
Yeah, I can.
Six o'clock?
Five thirty?
I could do five thirty.
I'm good with five. On the eleventh?
What time? Eleventh, just what time?
Um, I can do six, six would be better for me.
Yeah, six would be better with me.
Okay.
Six o'clock?
Six.
On that day, yeah.
Okay, so it's six.
All right, I'm in.
So, we will only be able to have two workshops?
That'll be enough. I don't think the budget, I don't think we have a lot on the budget, I just.
Yeah. All right.
Can, can, uh, Mayor, can we verify what we're looking at and going up against with the other agencies as far as pay?
For the police?
Police and fire.
Well, county doesn't have fire, so.
You already got the fire?
I said county. Do they have fire? They don't have fire. Down here. Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
For word one, moves or two seconds, let's go ahead and vote word one.
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank everybody.